Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council Meeting on Sanitation. At this time, please turn the electronic devices on silent or on vibrate mode. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we may begin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Oversight Committee for Sanitation and Solid Waste. Thank you, Sanitation Committee members, for being here. Councilmember Ose, Councilmember Menon, and Deputy Commissioner Greg Anderson for joining us today. Today, we will be focusing on a slate of sanitation bills that are primarily targeted towards the disposal of rechargeable e-bike batteries, NITSHA sanitation collection, nursing home sanitation collection, community gardens, organic waste collection, public organic waste receptacles, proper storage of waste, and street cleanliness grading systems. The New York City Department of Sanitation provides various critical operations to New Yorkers. We are always impressed by the scale of the work the workers do each day and each and every single day, and we're committed to working with the department to improve and adapt operations to meet the growing needs of the city. The first bill we will be hearing today is number 846, which would require DSNY to develop a plan for ensuring proper disposal of rechargeable batteries used for powered mobility devices. Earlier this year, we passed a slate of bills to address the risks of rechargeable e-bike batteries, and we need to continue to approach this issue comprehensively. I introduced this bill to tackle the disposal aspect. The popularity of e-bikes and micro mobility devices has taken off in New York City, from city bikes to e-scooters, and among the tens of thousands of deliveristas who depend on them for work. E-bike batteries have not only caused fires in homes and apartments across the city. Last year, my team visited a number of waste transfer facilities and heard about fires in sanitation garbage trucks, in these stations, and in our vital recycling facilities where chemical and hazardous materials are present in abundance. New York City must address the issue of e-bikes comprehensively. This means we must center workers and local businesses in new policies, regulations, and programs. It means we need to have a plan for disposal, and most importantly, it means we need to hold accountable the manufacturers of e-bike batteries and the companies that largely exploit deliveristas. And for companies should be the ones to bear the cost of the transition to safer e-bike batteries and the cost of disposal. Next up, we have Councilmember Aviles, intro 649, in relation to prohibiting the Department of Sanitation from charging the New York City Housing Authority for sanitation services. In June 2022, Councilmember Aviles and I partnered on a joint oversight hearing on sanitation at NITSHA. While NITSHA has various plans to improve waste management operations, there is still much progress to be made across the city. At the hearing, Deputy Commissioner Greg Anderson testified that in 2022, DSNY's containerized tonnage was at an average of 11,000, a little bit more than 11,000 tons per month. We also learned that between NITSHA's contracts with private carters and DSNY's additional pickup services, NITSHA is paying about a little over $7 million. We asked for NITSHA and DSNY to follow up on that breakdown, but we actually never heard back, so we'd like to check back on that today. Next, we have Councilmember Farias, intro number 720, in relation to waste collection from nursing homes. We also have Councilmember Abreu's, intro number 832, in relation to requiring the Department of Sanitation to collect organic waste from community gardens. Up next, we have Councilmember Russler, intro number 863, in relation to public organic waste receptacles. This February, DSNY announced the installation of 250 smart composting bins in Bushwick, Bed-Stuy, Castle Hill, Harlem, High Bridge, the North Shore of Staten Island, many other places, and with an additional 150 on the way from Manhattan. DSNY had also previously stated they would cite smart bins nearby public schools as the city expands school composting to every New York City public school by the next school year. We also have Councilmember Ose's, intro number 544, in relation to penalties for failure to store waste in a satisfactory manner in required receptacles and for placing waste at the curb or on the street or sidewalk prior to the specified time for collection. And finally, we have Councilmember Moya's, intro number 768, in relation to street cleanliness grading system. For many New Yorkers, DSNY's cleanliness score simply does not match up to how residents score their neighborhoods. Much like we were able to do last year with our sweep NYC bill, this bill would bring more transparency into this cleanliness grading system that is critical for accountability, equity, and ability to allocate resources properly. Looking forward to the dialogue regarding these bills today. I'm going to recognize also Councilmember Alexa Aviles has joined us, and we have some opening remarks from members which we'll hear from, but we're going to hear from sanitation first. No, okay, we're going to hear from Councilmember Ose first on his bill since he has to run.
Thank you, Chair Nurse, and good morning, Deputy Commissioner. I want to speak about my bill, intro 544. Our streets deserve to be free of litter and rodents, but when trash is not properly containerized, litter is scattered all over our sidewalks, attracting rats to our community. Litter and rodents are not only an eyesore, but they pose serious health and sanitation risks to our neighbors. As the summer approaches and more New Yorkers are spending time outside, it is important to make sure our streets are clean and free from trash. Currently, the penalty for improper waste containerization is from $50 to $200, depending on the number of violations. For buildings with management companies and big landlords, this amount is considered to be pocket change, not a lesson learned to deter one from engaging in improper behaviors. To have cleaner and healthier streets, we must make sure that we truly hold bad actors accountable and to ensure waste is properly containerized. Intro 544 will impose a graduated sanitation violation based on the number of units in a building and the number of repeat violations. Under this bill, the fine amount will be dependent on the size of the building and the number of violations on the property. A graduated violation penalty ensures that big landlords and property owners who are bad actors are held accountable without hurting or overpenalizing small homeowners and property managers. Where there is real accountability, people are deterred from acting in ways that negatively impact New Yorkers, and our communities deserve better. This bill of pass would be another tool in our city's commitment to ending the rodent population, and I do know that the administration and the commissioner is supportive of this piece of legislation. Thank you, Chair.
Of course, Councilmember Ose. I hope you have a great time at your school speech. Next up, we're going to give it to Councilmember Aviles, and then Councilmember Moya, if you have some remarks, you will come up next.
Thank you, Chair Nurse, for holding this hearing today, and thank you to the Department of Sanitation for being present to offer testimony and answer our questions. During my tenure as the Chair of Public Housing, I've heard time and time again how NITSHA's dire financial situation continues to contribute to declining conditions for public housing residents. This year, the council has been informed that the financial picture for the authority is so bleak that service delivery is threatened. While our state and federal government desperately need to step up to protect our public housing residents, the city can do its part as well. First, we can restore the $31 million to proposed cuts outlined in the preliminary budget. This number includes a restoration of the vacant unit readiness program, which helps rehab units to house and shelter residents, emergency transfers, and those on the NITSHA waiting list. As it stands, failing to house shelter residents in NITSHA units is not a net savings to the city, and as we will continue to pay the cost simply to another agency. This sort of common sense holistic approach is looking at cost savings is one of the inspirations for intro 649. This bill is a direct offshoot of the work of Assemblymember Harvey Epstein and his team at the state level to stop the double taxation on NITSHA residents, double charging of NITSHA for basic city services. The bill that is authored that you are all considering today calls on DSNY to stop charging NITSHA for services, which only serves to sink an already funded authority further into the red. Residents and advocates fought hard for the same practice against the NYPD, who used to charge NITSHA upwards of $74 million annually for additional services. So to use an age-old expression, why are we robbing Peter to pay Paul? In drafting intro 649, we actually had difficulty locating the unit of appropriation where this transaction between NITSHA and DSNY occurs, and so many of my questions around these basics, excuse me, so many of my questions are around these basics to get at, what should be transparent through the budgeting process? How much is being spent? For what type of service? How frequently? To which developments? And so on. I look forward to hearing more about the services DSNY is providing to NITSHA for this additional fee and what creative solutions we can come up with to prevent NITSHA from having to cut services so that public housing residents can receive a basic service that is provided to the rest of New York City at no additional cost. And I underscore that NITSHA residents are New York City taxpaying residents, paying for sanitation services through their taxes, and to many, this is a double taxation from their perspective. So we look forward to the conversation, and thank you, Chair, and the committee for this hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Aviles. If Councilmember Moya would like to say any remarks regarding his bill, the floor is yours.
I need to be unmuted. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Chair. Thank you so much for the opportunity today to discuss my bill, intro 768. For far too long, we have seen our neighborhood burdened by the dirty streets and a seemingly never-ending cycle in searching for solutions. This bill would help address the concerns of the trash on our streets. Intro 768 would create a letter grade index, which would assess conditions by the amount of weeds, discarded bulk items, and most importantly, identify illegal dumping areas. The area would be measured by blockface, which extends from one block corner to corner, including both the street and the sidewalks. Sanitation would be responsible to visit these sites no less than twice a year, provide a grade on their website, along with the reason for the grade of the blockface received. This legislation would help empower DSNY to make smart concentrated efforts to clean our city. No one wants to walk past the same trash heap and rat buffet day after day. The intent of this legislation is both to help members of the community that want to see cleaner areas to live, work, and play along, and help the sanitation department have the ability to put resources into cleaning up the areas that need the resources the most. We all deserve better than to walk past the same trash heap on our block. This is truly about beautifying our neighborhoods and supporting the DSNY in their efforts. And with that, I thank you, Chair, for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Moya. And if any other chairs, any other members arrive that have bills, we'll let them speak. But I think for now, we're going to turn it to committee council to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before council members and to respond to honestly the council member question?
I do.
Thank you.
Awesome. Looking forward to hearing what you got.
Good morning, Chair Nurse, and members of the City Council Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management. My name is Gregory Anderson, and I am Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Strategic Initiatives at the New York City Department of Sanitation. Thank you for the opportunity to provide brief testimony on the bills being heard by this committee today. The Department of Sanitation is laser-focused on cleaning up New York City. We have implemented a tidal wave of change to dramatically reduce the amount of time that trash sits on the curb, including enrolling 2,500 buildings in the multi-unit building collection program to set out waste between 4:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. for a collection just hours later on the day shift, conducting 25% of our waste collections on the night shift, and focusing those efforts in the right places, the denser parts of the city with larger piles of trash, starting our day shift operations an hour earlier at 5:00 in the morning to get trash off the streets before New Yorkers wake up, removing scheduled collections from the evening shift entirely, incentivizing the use of containers with lids through our new set-out times rule, and eliminating black bags set out for collection on sidewalks before 8:00 p.m. Together, these initiatives, many just weeks old, have had a massive impact on our streets. We have fewer trash bags on our sidewalks, and those that remain sit on the curb for just a fraction of the time. Combined with unprecedented new investments in cleaning programs that restore and more, the cuts to cleanliness during the previous administration, Mayor Adams and DSNY have made substantial progress in our work to get stuff clean. This includes, as Commissioner Tisch mentioned at last month's preliminary budget hearing, a total investment of $53.2 million in the current fiscal year by the Adams administration for new restored and expanded cleaning programs. We are doing our part to clean up New York City, but every New Yorker has a role to play in maintaining the cleanliness of our neighborhoods, and in a city this size, it can't just be the 10,000 members of the sanitation department doing this work. We have a renewed focus on enforcing basic cleanliness rules, cleaning the sidewalk in front of a chain store, putting trash out when you're supposed to, and in an orderly manner, the kinds of things that keep our streets clean. These are the most basic cleanliness rules, not enforcement for enforcement's sake. But enforcement only goes so far when the penalty for inaction is too low. Right now, fines for violating basic sanitation rules are set by local law at just $50, an amount that's far too low. This was reduced from $100 by the City Council in 2021, sending the wrong message that cleanliness is not a top priority for our city. DSNY is proud to very strongly support intro 544, sponsored by Councilmember Chi Ose and co-sponsored by Chair Nurse, which would increase penalties for failure to store waste properly and for failing to follow DSNY's new set-out time rules. The bill would go farther in creating progressive penalties for multi-unit properties that violate these rules, correctly creating stiffer penalties for the buildings that create the largest and most obstructive piles of trash. We look forward to working with the sponsors and the council to refine the bill to account for operational realities of our enforcement, and we wholeheartedly support its enactment. But we can't stop there. Longstanding provisions of local law require property owners and commercial establishments to keep clean their sidewalks, public areas, and the area along the curb line, 18 inches into the street. Local Law 80 of 2021 also reduced penalties for these requirements to just $50. And cutting this penalty at a time when cleanliness was headed very much in the wrong direction told property owners and businesses that they don't have to do their part to ensure New York City's neighborhoods are clean and vibrant. DSNY strongly supports rolling back this reduction and creating meaningful, but not excessive, penalties to uphold this important part of the social contract. Now, I'll briefly address the other bills being heard today. Intro 649 would prohibit DSNY from requiring payment from the New York City Housing Authority for sanitation services. While many NITSHA properties receive containerized collection from DSNY, some locations receive curbside collection, and in these locations, DSNY has historically provided supplemental collection above and beyond the neighborhood collection frequency, and NITSHA has provided some reimbursement for these supplemental services. Any change in this longstanding arrangement would need to happen in the context of larger budget discussions around reimbursement from and city payments to NITSHA and overall service levels at NITSHA. For this reason, we do not support this bill. Intro 720 would require DSNY to collect solid waste from nursing homes at no cost, regardless of whether the nursing home is a for-profit entity. Nursing homes importantly provide vastly different services to residents than a standard residential building, including both healthcare and food service. Entities that provide these services and are not otherwise eligible for DSNY collection service must hire a private carter to remove their waste, as with all other commercial entities. DSNY does not support expanding city collection to these entities and opposes this bill in its current form. Intro 768 would require DSNY to establish and implement a letter grading system for cleanliness of each street and inspect each street at least twice a year. Currently, the Mayor's Office of Operations conducts monthly assessments of a sample of street segments in each sanitation district and section to determine an overall rating for each district and section on a monthly basis. We agree that this approach is outdated and produces less than meaningful ratings. We are thinking through different ways to accomplish the goal of evaluating cleanliness on a more granular, actionable level. However, as I mentioned previously, the responsibility for cleanliness of sidewalks and the area along the curb falls to the property owner. Among the options we are considering is a program that would also grade individual properties along each block, evaluating the maintenance of their sidewalk and the area 18 inches into the street. We look forward to further conversations with council on these potential changes, including the resources that would be required to implement such a program. Intro 832 would require DSNY to collect organic waste from community gardens that request such collection via an online application. In short, we agree with the intent of the bill and will be collecting from community gardens on a weekly basis as part of our universal curbside composting program rolling out over the course of the next 18 months. However, we don't think that an online application is necessary to achieve this goal. Intro 846 would require DSNY to develop a plan for disposing of rechargeable batteries used for e-mobility devices, including maintaining two collection locations for rechargeable batteries in each, sorry, that should say each borough. DSNY currently accepts rechargeable batteries at our special waste sites, one in each borough open one day a week, and our safe disposal events twice annually in each borough. While we agree that rechargeable batteries represent a growing threat to public safety, we do not agree that DSNY should be solely responsible for creating this program as proposed in the bill. Instead, manufacturers and retailers should be responsible for the collection and recycling of the products that they sell. We support updates to the state rechargeable battery law currently introduced in the legislature that would strengthen and expand the existing rechargeable battery program to cover e-mobility batteries. Lastly, intro 863 would require DSNY to install 25 public organic waste receptacles in each community district. We are pleased with our network of 250 smart compost bins that we launched earlier this year, and we plan to install another 150 bins this summer. However, we firmly believe in the universal curbside program as our primary approach to providing the service to all New Yorkers, and we are concerned that this number of bins would be costly to both install and service. And given our current budget realities, we cannot support this bill at this time. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I'm now happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez, and then Councilmember Farias. I'm going to give you a chance to talk about your bill.
Thank you so much, Chair. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Chair Nurse, for allowing me this additional time to speak on my bill, intro 720. Intro 720 is essential to the health, well-being, and daily quality of life of our seniors and our senior caretakers citywide. Right now, nursing homes across the city are currently having to pay out-of-pocket to private contractors to come collect their garbage each week. This is money that our nursing homes could be using towards programming and allow more money to serve New Yorkers in their golden years. This legislation would require DSNY to begin waste collection at our nursing homes citywide and thus provide assistance we know our nursing homes deserve. And while not all waste should be collected by DSNY, the city should be open to how we can continue to alleviate the burden for centers and places that are helping our seniors age in place with dignity. Thank you to the current sponsors of the bill, Councilmembers Salamanca, Brewer, and Lewis, as well as to former Councilmember Ben Kalos, who held this bill last session, and Attorney General Letitia James for drafting this legislation back in 2015. It's clearly been around for a long time, so we have some work to do. I look forward to working with DSNY and finding ways to getting this bill over the finish line, and I hope that more of my colleagues will sign on to intro 720, which hopes to support our seniors and bolster our nursing home resources. Thank you, Chair, for the time, and thank you, DSNY, for being with us here today in your testimony.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Farias. I'm going to try to do this like section by section, so I think I'm going to start with the NITSHA and sanitation bill. I'll just have a couple of questions and then kick it over to you for yours. And then we'll discuss the nursing home bill, and then we'll discuss the street cleanliness grading, so that Councilmember Moya can chime in as well. Okay. So as I mentioned in my opening, we had a slightly smaller version of this conversation last year. We were trying to pull out and kind of separate, you know, what's being paid for what. As I mentioned, NITSHA testified that about $7 million is paid across both private carding companies and DSNY. You mentioned that what you charge for is the additional pickup beyond the normal pickup days for the curbside in areas that are requiring that. So I just want you to kind of refresh us on, and if you can, update us on exactly how much annually, how much revenue you're getting from NITSHA and for what particular services?
Sure, absolutely. So sanitation works very closely with NITSHA on all of their waste management operations. As part of the few developments that do receive curbside service, generally those receive the residential frequency three days a week, so the same as every other apartment building or household in that district. And then we also will add one or two additional services per week so that they don't have to store the material for as long of a time, and that's what NITSHA reimburses us for on the sort of city tax levy side. That averages to around $750,000 a year. That's the amount that's sort of baselined in our miscellaneous revenue budget, and, you know, some years it's slightly higher, some years it's slightly lower. It's based on the actual number of additional trucks that we run in any given year.
And then could you kind of give us a general sense of which developments on your list where you're concentrating most of your resources, or is this just across the board? Or is there, you know, some areas that require more service than others?
So the supplemental service, again, is at those developments that receive curbside service from sanitation. The vast majority of NITSHA developments do have containerized service, so we service them with a roll-on, roll-off container. It's an on-call service, so whenever the containers are full, we come to pick them up. We work very closely with NITSHA on a daily basis. We have officers in every district, in every borough, that work with their counterparts at NITSHA to make sure that service is happening on schedule, and there's no reimbursement or payment that happens for that. It's just the developments that, for, generally for space reasons, haven't installed those compactors where we are providing the supplemental curbside service so that they don't have, because the NITSHA buildings don't have, you know, trash rooms or trash storage areas the way that, you know, modern apartment buildings are required to have, we want to try to alleviate those storage concerns and pick up the trash as soon as possible after it's generated.
Do you know how many of those developments, like numerically, how many developments is that?
I know we provide the RORO service from 131 developments, and those are generally, you know, the larger developments. There's sort of a continuum of service that we provide to NITSHA. There's the sort of large centralized developments. Those are generally containerized. Then there are a lot of places that are sort of dispersed, and those are treated, you know, very much the same as other, you know, brownstones or homes that are on residential collection routes. Then there's some developments sort of in the middle that, you know, are sort of medium-sized, and those tend to be the more curbside routes. I don't have the exact number of developments that we service curbside with me today, but it's, you know, a small share of the sort of larger traditional NITSHA developments.
Okay. I'm going to give it to Councilmember Aviles, but just to confirm, you're paying about $750,000 a year. That's like, what, we just bought two dogs for that? The two robo-dogs? So that's what you would need to baseline to be able to do that roughly, starting there, to be able to cover the cost and not have NITSHA pay you all?
Yeah, that's what's currently accounted for in our budget.
Okay. Councilmember Aviles?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Can you, will you be able to provide to this council the costs that NITSHA has been paying for the service over the last five fiscal years?
Yeah, we can work with OMB to provide the exact costs. That money doesn't necessarily come into sanitation's budget. It's more of a, it's reflected as part of the sort of overall year-end accounting between NITSHA on various funding sources, so city tax levy is just one of their funding sources, and so it's accounted for on the back end by OMB, but we can work with them to provide those numbers.
Right. So, okay, great. Well, we'll look forward to receiving that to understand like the historical, at least, you know, the payment trend in the last five years and how that's, whether it's trended up or down, and the reasons for that. So we look forward to receiving that. Can you, I guess we'll also be receiving a breakdown of where you're providing the curbside service to which NITSHA developments and the supplemental, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding, you're noting that the $750,000 that you are currently paying, that NITSHA is currently paying, DSNY is covering just a one additional day across all the development service pickup? Is that what the $750 is paying for?
Yeah, it's covering the cost of dedicated trucks that just provide supplemental service to NITSHA developments.
But those are not the curbside developments. Those are separate developments.
Those are the developments that receive the same curbside frequency Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday, that other residents in that district receive, and then they also receive a supplemental collection one or two days a week on these extra trucks that are paid for by NITSHA.
Do you know how much service the $750,000 provides, purchases?
I don't know the number of truck shifts that that sort of accounts for, but we can provide that.
That would be really very helpful. Where can we locate the transaction that's occurring between NITSHA? Where can we locate that transaction that's occurring between NICA and DSNY in the city budget?
On our budget, it happens in the miscellaneous revenue area, so it's not necessarily showing up in our baseline expense budget, but it is something, it's a chargeback that, again, it's an accounting exercise by OMB, a chargeback from the city to NICA at the end of the year based on the actual resources expended.
And does, does NICA and DSNY revisit this MOU agreement? Does it set any particular stipulation in terms of level of service or baseline costs?
As I said, we have, you know, an ongoing relationship with NICA's waste management operations. Their Director of Waste Management Operations is a former DSNY chief. We work very closely on a day-to-day basis to make sure we're resolving their issues. So I'm confident that there are many other supplemental services that we provide to NICA on an ad hoc basis that they're not currently paying for. It's just these specific supplemental curbside trucks that are part of that year-end chargeback.
So I guess I presuppose there was an MOU. Is there an actual MOU between DSNY and NICA for this service, or is this decided on an ad hoc basis with your relationship?
So this is done as part of the sort of year-end, as I mentioned, as part of the year-end exercise by OMB, just to sort of, and again, I am not an OMB expert, so I don't know exactly what the process is or what other charges OMB accounts for in this process. But, you know, it's not something that is reflected directly in sanitation's books. It's a miscellaneous revenue item.
Right, but no, I guess I'm asking, is there an MOU?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Not to your knowledge, okay. I think my prior questions presuppose that there was, because NICA has done MOUs for when it's paying additional services to other city agencies, so I just wanted to clarify that there is not an existing MOU.
We can double-check that with our team in NICA and see if there is.
Can you clarify what, how much does DSNY overall spend on supplemental services for the city? What percentage, what I'm getting at is I'd love to know what percentage of this supplemental service constitutes from the larger supplemental services that DSNY provides?
We don't generally provide supplemental service on sort of residential curbside collection to any other customers. The only other sort of similar use case would be DOE, where we have dedicated school trucks that run five nights a week to pick up trash from, trash and recycling and organics from the DOE public schools. For residential customers, the service is provided either three days a week with one day a week recycling, or twice a week with one day a week recycling, and that's the only option we provide.
Didn't, didn't the council was able to secure additional funding for additional supplemental services in the last budget cycle? Did the city not provide additional supplementary services to residents?
On the cleaning side, yes. Certainly, you know, we have supplemental precision cleaning initiative services, we have supplemental litter basket service. I think those two together account for around $29.5 million in FY '23. So those are, but those are sort of on the cleaning side, not on the household trash collection side.
Got it. And could a better containerization limit the necessity for additional services?
I think that's absolutely something that we're looking at. As the council's aware, we are doing a sort of top-down review of containerization, studying the feasibility in New York City. We're also advising NICA on a containerization pilot that they're moving ahead with in the Coney Island area. So we certainly think that containerization could help improve some of the waste management practices at NICA. Whether it, you know, ends up saving, saving money, I don't know, but certainly has the potential to reduce the impact of trash and increase cleanliness.
Do you think it's fair that NICA residents have to pay twice for trash, trash collection?
I can't speak to how much the NICA residents are paying for the service. I'm not familiar with the sort of funding sources for the New York City Housing Authority, but, you know, this is a supplemental service above and beyond what other residents are receiving.
Would you say that the city needs to increase its level of service for NICA residents, for NICA campuses across the city? Do you think what is occurring now is adequate?
I think we can always do more with more resources. The challenge is that, you know, given the current budget environment, we're not in a position to just be adding additional resources. So we're, you know, we're in active conversations with OMB about additional reductions and savings, so it's, you know, it's a challenging environment to have conversations about additional service.
For sure, but given the need, has DSNY advocated for an increased level of service and funding specifically to support the needs of NICA residents?
I think it's something that we look at in terms of our overall service levels and resource allocations. I don't think we've advocated specifically in this area, but, you know, our work is to collect the trash, recycling, and organics and keep the city clean. We're advocating for resources across all of those programs.
Sure, and I guess what I'm getting at, and absolutely, we know you are trying to do that across the city, but we see concentrated populations with inadequate service levels and inadequate capacity to even collect properly and service levels, and we see accumulations of trash, particularly in NICA, unlike other places in the city. And so I guess I'm curious, you're recognizing the increased level of need just because of the conditions that exist? If DSNY has been strongly advocating for increased funding specifically to support that increased needs that come out of NICA developments, just because of, you know, what they are and the concentration of population in those?
I think the majority of the sort of needs on an operational, on the operational side are actually within NICA itself. I don't think there's a tremendous need in terms of additional sanitation services to collect the trash that NICA sets out. I think there is a greater need potentially within NICA for either infrastructure or staff to be able to manage that waste. I can't speak for the sort of budgeting process that they go through, but I do know, over the past several years, there have been substantial additional resources in-city funding directed to NICA for things like improvements to trash chutes, additional waste containers, new waste containers, additional waste storage areas, new concrete pads and waste storage areas, many of which NICA did discuss at the hearing that we had last June, I think. But I don't have the details on those specific investments.
Yeah, I would not disagree that there is, a significant portion of this is something that NICA has to do internally and make significant improvements. Nevertheless, sanitation and trash pickup, if you, if you see that NICA developments across the city require supplemental services at a higher rate than potentially other areas just because of what the developments are, the numbers of people in the developments, then that, to me, would scream a urgent advocacy on behalf of the agency to get as much resources to make sure we meet that need for those developments. And so I was asking specifically if DSNY is doing that, because I have never seen DSNY specifically push for increased funding, particularly for supplemental services for residents of public housing. And so, yes, given the constraints, nevertheless, I think what I'm not hearing is an urgency in calling for additional funding to support public housing residents in particular because of the level of service that is required there. So, thank you. I guess we look forward to receiving a breakdown of, again, of the cost of the developments that it, of the level of frequency of service, and if that changes what the ad hoc services that are in fact being provided, to get further information, you know, on what this is and how we can support our resident, our New York City residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Velazquez. I just have one other, one other question, which maybe you can answer, but does DSNY have any input on the pneumatic waste collection pilot that's happening at Polo Ground Towers and Ringle Houses?
Yeah, we were very interested in the pilots. I think that NICA campuses are actually really great places to use these kinds of approaches because they can cut down on the amount of staff time that's needed to move trash from one place to the other. So we're, you know, certainly very supportive of this and, you know, working with NICA to sort of move it toward the finish line.
Right. I mean, I know NICA's not here, but do you know if they've actually started construction on that?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, okay.
I think they have, actually. That's moving forward, and we're very excited about this project with the city. And I guess the other thing on this end is in terms of the containerization, we understand, obviously, NICA's looking, I'm curious about the level of coordination that happens in the discussion around containerization and how NICA proceeds and the city proceeds to make sure we don't build two separate systems that don't interact very well. I was curious about the level of communication that is happening around, around that.
Yeah, so we've been advising NICA throughout the RFP process. We, you know, help them review the initial responses to the request for expressions of interest. We help them put together the RFP. We help them evaluate the RFP and are looking forward to working with them, you know, as they roll this out. I believe their timeline is sometime next year, but they're still working to finalize that procurement.
And lastly, do you, does DSNY have a sense of the amount of trash that is collected from NICA campuses across the city?
I do think I have that. Yeah, so in total, the, the material that DSNY collects, around 160,000 tons per year. And that's, that's the material that is containerized or collected in supplemental curbside collections. Obviously, the material that's collected on standard curbside routes is mixed in with other neighboring buildings.
And do you, do you know, has the trend of that collection remained stable? Does it go up and down? Do you track that over a period of time?
So it has changed tremendously over the last four years, as with all household collections over the last four years, just because of changes in sort of the way that we live, work, learn, play, et cetera, during the pandemic. So as with other, other collections, sort of increased in FY '21, stayed a little higher in FY '22, and then has, has shown a decrease since then. But we can certainly look into those and provide you some sort of global statistics there.
Thank you. And does this include recyclables? And is there any composting occurring on NICA campuses?
So for recyclables, they're generally collected on the curbside routes with other recycling in the districts, so we can't separate out the specific NICA recycling tonnage. For composting, yes, we're providing composting services at NICA developments. We have our smart bins in the vicinity of the four developments in Queens Community Board One, so that's Ravenswood, Astoria, Queensbridge, and Woodside. And we are providing curbside composting service at some other developments in Queens, and, you know, we're working with NICA to try to expand that as we roll out universal curbside composting over the next 18 months.
Great. Could you provide a breakdown of what that looks like to the council?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We have a couple of people walked in. I want to recognize Councilmember Abreu, Botcher, Wrestler. I'm gonna let Councilmember Abreu and Wrestler say a few words about their bills, but is there any other questions from members on this particular bill? Okay. All right. So, Councilmember Abreu.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair Nurse, and to my colleagues. Today, I am speaking in support of my bill, Introduction 832, which would require DSNY to collect organic waste from community gardens that request a pickup. I have heard from several constituents and groups about the limited organic waste options in the district, and together, we came up with this proposal to bring additional pickup to the district as a step forward in organic waste collection. Many larger community gardens have relationships with composting facilities, but that isn't the case for every community garden that we support in the district, and we believe that's a trend that exists citywide. This bill would allow smaller community gardens to opt into collections through an online portal, lowering the bar for environmentally conscious neighbors to get together and collect waste from the surrounding community and from the garden for pickup. I look forward to hearing feedback from the Department of Sanitation and appreciate you, Chair Nurse, and my colleagues on this piece of legislation. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Councilmember Wrestler, do you want to say a few words?
Sure. I really appreciate it, and just want to thank you, Chair Nurse, for the rigor and thoughtfulness and the values you bring to your leadership of this committee. We've introduced a piece of legislation today that would require that the Department of Sanitation expand on the exciting pilot they've been working on in Bed-Stuy and a couple of other areas to install 25 public composting bins in every single community board across the city of New York, prioritizing placement of those locations in high-traffic pedestrian areas like parks and commercial corridors and transit hubs. You know, just like we have garbage cans and recycling bins on our street corners, we should have composting bins. And while I am sincerely appreciative of this administration's efforts to achieve universal composting, that is not in lieu of composting bins that are needed in busy areas to ensure that we're capturing that waste and diverting it from landfills in real time every day. And, and that's why we sponsor this legislation. Composting reduces the methane pollution caused by sending food waste to landfill and saves New York money by eliminating the very high cost of exporting waste. Just this past weekend, we did two tree care events in our district where we were taking the very processed compost that's collected in our parks from my kitchen and yours and putting it back into the tree beds of our community to keep our trees healthy. There is so much good that we can do with the compost that we gather in New York City, but we need to do a better job of collecting it. And that's why we sponsored this legislation, and I, I know that Greg has articulated some concerns and would look forward, look forward to discussing further.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. So we're gonna talk about the Intro 720 with waste from nursing homes, followed by Intro number 768, and then we'll move down the list. Councilmember Farias, you have any questions?
Thank you so much. Just in your testimony, you said including both healthcare and food service is included for nursing homes that provide a variety of different services to their residents. Is this section where, where there's opposition solely policy or administrative somewhere, or is there like a legal mandate or designation at the state level that is prohibiting us from doing waste collection in these facilities?
There's no prohibition at the state level. I think the challenge that we face is there are many, many categories of commercial establishments, some of which that do provide a social good, but if they are for-profit entities, they are required to hire private carders for their waste collection, so for-profit nursing homes fall into that same category.
Okay. And so is the main concern just that they're for-profit, or is that the waste also includes, you know, multiple layers of types of waste that are in there, like medical, like healthcare waste?
The concern is that these are commercial establishments and would have to follow the same rules as all other commercial establishments.
Okay.
And to clarify, we do provide collection service to nonprofits. There are two criteria that they can meet to receive collection service. One is if they own their property, which I presume some nonprofit nursing homes do, and have a tax-exempt letter from DOF, they can provide that to us and qualify for sanitation collection service. The other option is nonprofits that contract directly with the city can provide a funding letter from their contracting agency and receive collection service from us in that way. So nonprofits can receive collection service. Those nonprofits that are nursing homes that, for example, have medical waste, which is regulated waste under state law, also have to contract for the removal of that, for the red bag waste, but for their sort of standard trash and their kitchen trash, we would, we would collect that if they qualify.
Okay. And just the last question, well, last two-part question. So most of our nursing homes, both public and private, nonprofit and private, are in a lot of our residential areas, so I'm wondering around, at least they're in, most of them are in residential areas where routes wouldn't necessarily be disrupted if DSNY were to be including them within them. The New York State Department of Health website lists approximately 169 nursing home facilities in the New York City region, so would it be feasible for DSNY to provide service to these facilities at no cost?
It would be feasible, but there would be a It would be feasible, but there would be a cost to the city to provide that service. Because, you know, there may not be, there may not be additional space on the existing routes. We might, may have to add additional trucks, and we haven't done a survey of, of how much waste these locations generate.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a question. I don't know if you would know this, or if we would need follow-up, but do you know how many nonprofits senior centers you're currently, who are already, have gone through the steps to get their waste collected from you?
Don't have that number, and I don't know that we could necessarily come up with it that easily, because they'd just sort of be on residential routes with the other properties that, that receive.
Right, just through a curbside?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
And just, just to clarify, these, here we're talking about nursing homes specifically. Senior centers is a totally separate category, and in general, senior centers are receiving sanitation and collection service because they fall into either their government-run directly or in government facilities, or they fall into one of those nonprofit categories.
Great. Thank you for that. Next, we're gonna talk about the street cleanliness system, and then we'll go to, any questions from Councilmember Abreu if you have, and then we can talk about Councilmember Wrestler's bill. So for Intro number 768, which is the street cleanliness grading system, I think just for public conversation and record, if you could walk us through how the current street cleanliness grading system works, just in terms of frequency of establishing those grades, what are the logistics, like what are the, the metrics that people, when they go to a street and they're looking for X, Y, and Z, what are those things? How, you know, what's the sample size? Is it a block? Is it 10 blocks? Can you kind of just break those down for us?
Sure. So as I mentioned in my testimony, that program is run by the Mayor's Office of Operations. So they're sort of the experts in how that's delivered, but I can speak sort of generally based on my conversations with the Mayor's Office of Operations on, on how they deliver that. So that is a, a monthly rating on a district and section level. So each community district is broken up into several sections, between two for smaller districts, up to eight for larger districts. And so there's a rating, basically a percentage of streets that are rated acceptably clean, that's produced by the Mayor's Office of Operations. They do that using field surveys of a statistically representative sample within each of those geographies. The exact number of those samples I don't have, but the Mayor's Office of Operations could provide that. And they recently made a change to their rating approach from a fixed set of samples, where they were sampling the same streets every month for, as I recall, close to 40 years, to a dynamic sampling approach. So they're now sampling a new sample set every month, which allows them to sort of sample more streets over the course of a year, while still keeping the, the overall ratings statistically representative for the districts. So those scores are published monthly in both the, the Dynamic Mayor's Management Report. They're also provided sanitation monthly. They're reported annually in the overall Mayor's Management Report. And so, you know, we use those as, as one of many inputs into how we allocate our sort of cleaning resources. But as I mentioned in my testimony, you know, having a, a number for a whole district is not necessarily the most actionable or useful tool. So we are, you know, we are looking independently at how we can sort of measure street cleanliness. And I know the Mayor's Office of Operations is doing a, a project to sort of review their approach and, and come up with new recommendations for how to change that.
Okay, sorry if you mentioned it, but are you, so even though they're the ones carrying out that assessment, which is a piece of the overall way you distribute resources, did you mention the certain specific things that people are looking for in that sampling? I'm sorry, but could you just say?
I, I did not. So, you're right. They're looking specifically at litter and debris. So there's, there are separate ratings for sidewalks and for streets. So, and again, they're the sort of experts on how exactly the rating happens, but I know there are different sort of categories that, you know, if a street is entirely clean, it gets one score. If a street has occasionally scattered litter, it gets another score. If a street has illegally dumped material and piles of litter or matted debris, it gets another score. And there's some point at which that block is no longer determined to be acceptably clean, and that sort of rolls up into the overall scorecard rating. I will say, you know, one of the challenges that we have with scorecard is for every year, for the past several years, the citywide rating has been above 90% acceptably clean. I think we can all agree that in 2020, 2021, early parts of 2022, that was not reflective of how New Yorkers perceived the city and certainly how the sanitation department perceived the city, given our limited resources at that time. And so that's one of the reasons we're looking at how we can change that approach, because it's, it's simply not, not telling the whole story.
Right. And just to clarify again, for that sampling size, it was great to hear like the different types of things they're looking for. If they're sampling a sanitation district and they find, okay, this street is no longer accessible, how many times do they come back to continue that assessment? Or do they change blocks every time they do an assessment or a sampling?
So again, as I mentioned, they recently changed to a dynamic sample model. So they're, they're changing the sample of streets every month to try to get ratings for more streets. Previously, they had a fixed sample that was the same, let's call it, I don't know, 5,000. That's just a hypothetical number. The same 5,000 blocks every month. Now they're doing probably the same number of blocks that they did previously, but the, the specific blocks they're doing changes on a month-by-month basis.
Thanks for restating that. I'm trying to take notes and keep up. Okay.
And again, I'm, I'm, you know, just speaking from my recollection of conversations with operations, but we're happy to, to sit down with them and, and provide you a more detailed accounting of how it works today.
Thank you. I don't know if Councilmember Moya is still online, if he wants to ask questions? Oh, he signed off. Okay. Let me just make sure any of his questions weren't covered. Oh, Councilmember Wrestler, go ahead. Yep.
Thank you very much. Greg, I, I know we've, I don't know, should I say Deputy Commissioner? I'll be more formal. Deputy Commissioner, we've gone back and forth on this a fair bit, so I appreciate the chance to ask a couple questions. It sounds like the Department of Sanitation does not have a great deal of confidence in the scorecard ratings that are provided by the Mayor's Office of Operations. Is that fair?
I would say the scorecard ratings don't feel like they're reflective of New Yorkers' perception.
And so, in instances where communities are requesting a reduction in ASP, is there any mechanism for the Department of Sanitation to review and evaluate whether that's appropriate?
So, under, and I'm gonna get the number wrong, I think it's Local Law 30 of 2011, community districts are able to request reductions in alternate side parking frequency based on scorecard ratings over certain periods of time. I think it's the two prior fiscal years.
But it's still at the discretion of the Commissioner at the end of the day?
At the end of the day, yes. And, and our position currently is, you know, we're coming up on the one-year anniversary of the full restoration of alternate side parking regulations and the full restoration of street cleaning, plus restoration of many other cleaning services. And so, you know, the, the data from the last several years should not be used to make an assessment about the future of alternate side parking because it has been suspended and because, you know, the sort of, the way that New Yorkers interacted with public space has just, had, had been changed for several years. I will say going forward, you know, one of the things that we are looking at is not only do we have the right regulations in the right places, but a, a much stronger focus on are we providing the service that we're telling New Yorkers we will? And I think, you know, looking at the, I forget the local law number, but the bill that Chair Nurse sponsored earlier this year for the Sweep NYC program, and, you know, having more accountability for us on street cleaning, I think will also encourage more New Yorkers to move their cars. If more New Yorkers move their cars, you know, maybe we don't need twice a week cleaning in, in many districts.
I, 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 there are areas in and around my district that do have reduced ASP and that I think have, had maintained high levels of street cleanliness. And it's important, in my opinion, for our communities to have goals to work toward. And if we are able to maintain better levels of street cleanliness, then to be able to reduce ASP accordingly. And without having a mechanism in place where the Department of Sanitation is prepared to sign off on that, it limits our ability to organize and generate enthusiasm for street cleanliness. And so I really do hope that you'll support some mechanism for us to, to do that in the near future.
I think we're supportive of those conversations. I think the timing, given the fact that ASP was just restored last July, you know, means that we would like to wait for some period of time. I don't think it's forever, but, you know, at least until one year has passed since the restoration to see, you know, how have 301 complaints changed, how has summons issuance changed, how have the scorecard ratings changed, how have other factors changed? And, you know, really, I think, an important thing to remember, and I know what, what Commissioner Tish would say in this case, is if we are not cleaning the streets, that means more tickets get issued to the property owners, because that area 18 inches into the street along the curb is the responsibility of the property owners under the Administrative Code and has been for several decades. So it is, you know, it is imperative that we have access to the streets to be able to clean them, because otherwise, our only recourse is to send enforcement agents out and write tickets to property owners, which is, you know, not what we want to do as our sort of first, first effort. So I think we're open to conversations about reductions in, in cleaning frequency, but we need to look at the full set of factors, and doing so less than a year after restoring ASP is, is not the right time to do it.
Thank you. I know, Councilmember Rocker, did you have a question on this issue?
So great to hear you talk about how the current rating system isn't really working, because having almost every district in the city getting a 90% plus rating even during the pandemic, it's not accurate and it's not actionable. When you talk about new ways to evaluate cleanliness at a more granular, actionable level, what initial thoughts do you have for that? And, and when you talk about evaluating individual properties, how would that work? How could you, in New York, give cleanliness evaluations to individual properties? How could you measure it?
So I think, you know, a good sort of case study for this would be the, the city's rodent inspections. So those are published on a public-facing portal on a property-by-property, tax lot-by-tax lot basis. I think that's sort of the model that we would follow here is on some regular frequency, we would have inspections of these properties, not necessarily for enforcement purposes on that day, but to indicate to, you know, to, to neighbors of those properties, like here's, you know, if you perceive your, your, your neighborhood is dirty, you know, these folks are responsible for their sidewalks, their public areas, and the 18 inches into the street. So I think that's, I think that's one tool we could have to sort of shine a light on bad actors who are sort of, you know, causing problems in individual communities.
And that would include the sidewalk container situations too, because a lot of times, you've got an apartment building with containers that are too small to hold all the trash from that building. So they're, the lids are open, it's a mess, it's a, it's a rodent magnet. The cleanliness ratings ostensibly would capture that situation as well.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Were there any other questions around the street cleanliness grading? You have one on the cleanliness grading? On the cleanliness grading? We're kind of going by chunks. Okay. I just want to recognize Councilmember Salmon. I'll add you for, the list for questions. Okay, we're gonna turn to Councilmember Abreu's bill. I'll kick it over to you for some questions.
Thank you, Chair. So I understand your testimony as you support the intent of the bill, maybe not on how we get there. Is the administration open to effectuating the goals of the bill and having a conversation to achieve it legislatively?
Yeah, I think we're, we're certainly open. So, we fully agree that we should provide service to community gardens for composting. And we intend to do so as we expand the universal curbside program over the course of the next 18 months. So, you know, today, gardens in Queens that want to set out yard waste or yard and food waste together can do so, should do so, can do so in, in the same manner as residential properties.
And is, is it the administration's position that we can achieve this legislatively?
We don't necessarily think that it needs to be legislated, but, you know, certainly it's, it's consistent with our intent as we roll out the program, and so we're happy to, to work with council on legislation.
We, we hope that we achieve the goals of this legislation legislatively.
Okay. I had some questions. Sort of, uh, let me see. No, it's a different bill. Okay, we're gonna move to, does anyone have questions about the community gardens, organics? Okay. And we're gonna move to Councilmember Wrestler's bill. I, I did have just a few kind of questions to follow up from some of the hearings. Do you have any updated data on the uses of the smart bins? Just in terms of maybe tonnage collected overall on average?
Yes. So the tonnage collected overall, we're not able to provide because they're largely being collected on the school trucks.
Right.
We do have data on, you know, the number, the total number of users, the, the number of unlocks per day. I don't have that with me here today, but we can certainly provide that.
Okay. If I recall, one of the hearings we had, maybe it wasn't a budget hearing last year, you had just maybe announced the smart bins, and the Commissioner had testified you were gonna roll these out. They were gonna be at like every school. This was gonna be the, the on-ramp education and outreach tool to get all New Yorkers in this. And so just curious about those plans and, and moving forward, because I know you've rolled out a bunch on the residential blocks, but I know there was, I think in particular in relationship to some of the pieces of legislation in the Zero Waste Act around community drop-off, the answer was, well, we're gonna have smart bins at every school, and this is gonna be like the great way to, to on-ramp. So just curious where we're at with that.
Yeah, so the, the initial commitment last, that we made last April in the executive budget was 100 smart bins. We were able, with existing funding, to increase that number to 250 smart bins that were installed over the winter, which we announced in, in February, when we announced the universal curbside program. At that time, we also announced another 150. So we're, we're up to, you know, our, our sort of goal at the moment is 400 smart bins across the five boroughs. Those will not necessarily be equally distributed across the five boroughs. We've taken sort of different approaches in different places to see what works. In Brooklyn and in your district, and I think Councilmember Hudson's district and some others, we have very dense deployment of these smart bins, one every few blocks. In Upper Manhattan and the Bronx, we have them where we're using the sort of school approach. We have them in the vicinity of schools, you know, sort of more, more spread out, but still within a few blocks walking distance of any, any residential property. We're trying to see what approach works best where. We are seeing in Brooklyn that some of the bins that are very close to each other are getting a lot of usage. Some of the bins that are very close to each other are not getting as much. So, you know, as we roll out the universal curbside program in, in boroughs that have smart bins, we want to see what's the change in usage of the smart bins, what makes sense as far as deployment. We don't have, at this point, specific funding to go beyond that 400 number, but we're, you know, continuing to evaluate the program and, and want to have the right sort of distribution and number going forward.
Okay. So then, just in like relationship to last year's testimony, or, you know, as you were thinking about it, the goal is not to, as of this moment, you will not be putting one or a couple around schools. I mean, you mentioned in Upper Manhattan, but am I correct in, in restating that, or?
Yeah, so the, the approach that we're taking is for new smart bins, like the new smart bins that we're rolling out this summer, generally to service them with the school trucks. So they will generally be located in the vicinity of schools. Some will be out, you know, further away from schools, just because, you know, there's a sort of dearth of public schools on the east side of Manhattan for some reason. But we'll still put some sort of. put some smart bins there. But because we're servicing them with the school trucks, we want to be able to maximize the efficiency of those operations and keep them as close as possible to the routes that they're already on. I think going forward, you know, we still, we think the school truck model makes sense. We don't currently have universal school organics in Brooklyn yet. So that's why we took a different approach there. We will have universal school organics a year from now in Brooklyn. And so we may, at that point, reevaluate the deployment of the bins that are currently in Brooklyn, see if we can, you know, move somewhere around to try to expand the reach of that program.
Okay. And then just in relationship to Sean's bill, I mean, does it make sense to have, are you deploying some of these near community gardens?
In some cases, we're not necessarily, you know, deliberately citing them there. But if there are locations that make sense near community gardens, we are, we will put them there.
Okay. Lastly, before I turn it over to Councilmember Wrestler, you know, we had some New Yorkers who were really surprised to read some article, I didn't fully read it, to hear that the organics from the smart bins are primarily being anaerobically digested for methane. And it's my understanding that a good chunk of that sludge coming out of the eggs is first limed and then a lot of it is landfilled, which is kind of like the opposite of what's written on the orange bin, which is compost because it's not in that sense. So can you maybe, I know this is primarily a DEP thing, but I imagine you must know, since this is like your, an overall strategy, what percentage of the material from the smart bins is actually ultimately composted or used for some other agricultural benefit? And what percentage goes to a landfill?
Sure. So don't have the specific, like, how much goes to landfill in part because there is the anaerobic digestion process that converts the incoming food waste into largely methane. I think 75% of it, of the weight of the incoming material gets converted to methane. The remaining 25% is co-mingled with all of the other sewage bio-salads from the Newtown Creek plant. Of that remaining 25%, I, and I think there's a piece in The Times on this today that I read this morning, there's roughly 50/50, you know, 50% is true beneficial use agricultural purposes. The other 50% largely does go to beneficial use but is lime stabilized and is used, you know, for things like land reclamation in Pennsylvania, things like that. A very small amount, I think it's 5% according to that Times article, is actually sent to landfills. So 5% of the 25% is whatever that adds up to.
I didn't hear the piece. 50%, somewhere in the area of 50% is lime stabilized. And then what was that piece? Where was it used for?
So it's used for things like abandoned mine reclamation in places like Pennsylvania. I think that's a good use for the bio-salads at this point. I do understand that DEP has a goal to beneficially use all of its bio-salads by 2030. And we're very much pushing them to achieve that goal. We would love to see them achieve that goal faster. And, you know, certainly as we, as we expand digestion of organics that we collect through our curbside program, we want to make sure that we are pushing them to beneficially use as much as possible. And that includes both the gas and the resulting bio-salads.
So, sorry to keep going down the line. Do you, do you have any idea why that 5% might go to landfill? Is it a cost thing? Is it a transportation thing? Is it a?
That you'd have.
Because it's all, it's all in one pile. So I'm just wondering why that little sliver is somehow going to the landfill and not for the rest of these other uses?
We're certainly happy to ask DEP and get back to you.
Yeah, we can ask them too. Okay. I had one more question. When you hit those 400 bins, will all that material be going to Newtown?
Not necessarily. You know, our goal is to have a distributed network of locations to deliver the food and yard waste that we collect through both the curbside program, the school program, and the smart bin program. Right now, we are limited to very few locations where that material is processed. As we've said before, we're putting out a new contract, hopefully this summer, that will procure additional transfer processing and beneficial use sites. And we hope to have a sort of more distributed network, as I mentioned, so that we don't have all of the trucks going to just one, two, or three locations. We do hope that we can get more composting as a part of that procurement. The challenge that we face is composting is a very land-intensive process at the scales that we are talking about. And there are very few compost sites within a reasonable driving distance of New York City to take the food and yard waste to those compost sites. So there's a large one, McEnroe Farms Upstate. There's Long Island Compost out in Suffolk County. There's a few in New Jersey. We're hopeful that we can use those sites as part of our network alongside anaerobic digestion. But, you know, we have to go through the procurement process and see what comes out.
And this, is this the locations that you're trying to have for larger central decentralization distribution points? Is this inclusive of some of the bigger nonprofit sites like the Big Reuses, the Earth Matters, LES Ecology? You're already bringing stuff to there, but is the smart bin stuff going to go there at all?
So the smart bin stuff at the moment is not going there because it does need to be de-packaged. You know, it is very clean material, but we do allow folks to use plastic bags. And generally, the other, the other kinds of drop-off sites that, for example, Big Reuse receives material from does not allow plastic bags. So they can just sort of mix everything together and get going on the process. The de-packaging is a challenge and remove, screening out the plastic material without a large expensive screener is a challenge for those smaller operations. So it's something that I think we're interested in, but don't have a good plan for at the moment.
I mean, couldn't you couple the smart bins with a litter basket when you're thinking about placement to move away eventually from allowing people to use plastic bags?
I think we're also trying to balance convenience for New Yorkers. I think if we add too many steps and requirements, then it stops becoming a service that we're providing them and starts becoming a sort of nagging exercise that we're doing. So I think we want to, we want to try to walk that line to make sure we're collecting as much material as possible, making it as easy for New Yorkers to participate. But, you know, obviously do want to support those mid-scale community sites as much as we can.
Thank you for that. Okay, Councilmember Wrestler, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair Nurse. And I have to say, I feel like I can't remember an agency only sending one person up to just like do it all. Maybe there's somebody else behind you. But it's like Greg Anderson is a one-man band. He does it all. So it's good to be with you again, Greg, always. I just had a few questions on our bill. With the existing program to install the smart compost bins, what area is, what areas are the Department of Sanitation targeting beyond the bins that have been currently installed?
Yeah. So as we announced in February, the next 150 are primarily focused on the remainder of Manhattan. So right now, we have bins in Manhattan north of, I think it's 110th Street on the west side, 103rd Street on the east side. So we're going to try to fill in the remainder of Manhattan, maybe add some more bins in high demand areas of Upper Manhattan. And that's because Manhattan is getting the curbside program last. So they have to wait 18 months. Brooklyn only has to wait six months. So, you know, we decided that Manhattan was the best place to focus those efforts.
I was doing an event in the Bed-Stuy portion of my district this weekend, and some of the Bed-Stuy residents from Councilmember Osay's district were hanging out with us and talking about how much they've been loving the smart bins and that they're utilizing them frequently. Is this pilot evaluating the percentage of compost that's being gathered that's household waste versus just kind of compostable materials that people are utilizing when they're out and about?
Yeah, we're not seeing a tremendous amount of like litter compost. It's a lot of stuff that folks bagged at home and are bringing to the smart bins.
Great.
Like not a lot of like half-eaten sandwiches from the corner deli. It's mostly, you know, bagged food scraps from home.
Although good to have a place to take your half-eaten sandwich from the corner deli.
You should just buy the right-sized sandwich.
Sometimes your eyes are bigger than your stomach, Greg. I feel like we could go back and forth on this. But ideally, we would, I think, all love to see compost bins everywhere across the city of New York, just as there are litter baskets in, all over the city of New York. I think the last count that we did was, that we checked on was 23,000 public litter baskets. Our legislation would get us to about 1,300 compost bins, so a twentieth of that figure, 5% of the litter baskets that we have around the city. Why is that too ambitious for the Department of Sanitation to accomplish?
So I think the challenges are a few-fold. One is these, the smart compost bins are more expensive per unit than a litter basket, on the order of $4,000 to purchase the unit itself. And then because, you know, we want to keep these things clean, neat, orderly, we have, you know, annual cleaning expenses that come with that. We have software and operations expenses that come with, you know, maintaining the unlocking mechanism and the application and things like that. So it's, you know, we're talking, you know, millions of dollars upfront and millions of dollars a year annually to continue to operate these. And then the other challenge is, you know, making sure we have the resources to collect from them. You know, at the level of density that we have the smart compost bins distributed in Upper Manhattan and the Bronx, we are able to collect from them using the existing school truck routes. So there's no additional collection need there. At the level of density that we have them in community boards three, four, and eight in Brooklyn, we are running additional trucks every single day to pick those up. And that's a net cost. So, you know, for litter baskets, for those 23,000 litter baskets, we run close to 800 trucks per week to be able to service those litter baskets. I'm not saying that having 1,300 smart bins would take 800 trucks per week, but it would take some number of trucks per week to be able to make sure that we're keeping them empty. Because the most frustrating thing, and I can say this as someone who's used smart bins and has experienced this, is when you pull up the app and the smart bin closest to you is red, and then you have to, you either walk to the one that's further away, or, you know, some New Yorkers may say, it's not worth it. I'm just going to throw it away. So we want to make sure that we're keeping those smart bins green on the app as much as possible and providing that level of service is part of that.
And is the Department of Sanitation intent on, should the pilot be successful, in these select community boards, expanding the smart bin model while concurrently expanding curbside compost?
It's something that we are certainly evaluating. We want, we do want to see on a larger scale, the impacts of curbside composting on smart bin utilization. I think Brooklyn will give us a really good opportunity to do that this October. So, you know, at this time, we are not funded beyond the 150 expansion that we've already announced. But it's something that we are certainly evaluating and we'll continue to have discussions with the council, with OMB, with the administration, as we sort of work towards a universal composting program in the next 18 months.
And just one more question. Would the Department of Sanitation be open to council members funding smart bin, smart compost bins in our districts through our discretionary funding at our disposal?
I would say yes with the caveat that, you know, the service is an important component of that. So where there is existing, for example, school truck service, and there are substantial parts of Brooklyn that do have school truck service today of organics, I think it would be much easier to place a smart bin there because we have the built-in collection. In places that don't have school truck service yet and are getting it over the course of the next 12 months, I think we may want to wait until that school truck service is in place before we start to add additional smart bins.
Thank you very much, Chair.
I guess, these are pretty, they're pretty mobile. Like you can decide to relocate them, right? So I'm wondering is as curbside rolls out to, you know, depending on how you want to move the bill, but as you're rolling out and you're seeing, okay, like this street has high participation rates, which I'm still, we're still kind of figuring out how you're evaluating that. But okay, this avenue has high participation rates, maybe the smart bins can be moved to, you know, like for example, Bushwick Ave, we have like one every block. Might be, you know, we don't have curbside yet, but once we get it in Brooklyn and it's out for like a year or six months, and like Bushwick Ave is like rocking if it does, maybe there's a way to like not have one every block, but every other block and relocate some of those bins in commercial corridors to achieve the aims of what Councilmember Wrestler's bill is. Is that level of flexibility something you all are thinking about?
Yeah, it's not as easy as moving a standard litter basket because they are physically affixed to the sidewalk.
Okay.
But they can be moved and we have moved them before. There's a small cost associated with that, just having the contractor come out and move them from one place to another. But it's something that we are certainly looking at. And that's part of the evaluation we want to do as the curbside program rolls out in Brooklyn this fall, is, you know, what is the right level of, we're sort of calling it very bureaucratically, de-densification of the smart bin deployment. So it's something that we are going to evaluate and, you know, potentially move those bins from the highly concentrated three community districts to potentially other community districts in Brooklyn.
Yeah. I mean, I think Councilmember Wrestler's bill is on the nose in terms of where people are eating and drinking and hanging out, or some of these like summer markets and things like that. Like having this option is like a very easy way to catch that. So I think it's important to look at. I know what you're saying in terms of the service route, but we, I know as members, we spend so much time and energy keeping our commercial corridors clean, just in general, through supplemental cleaning services, paying for baskets, all sorts of stuff. It makes sense to add that layer on and try to figure out how to service that at, you know, some regular standard. And I know those, because they're electronic, whatever, you can know when they need to be filled up. But just a general comment. Okay. Councilmember Abreu, you had a question on this?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify in terms of, actually make a comment and clarify. In terms of the school program, where is DSNY currently running organics collections?
Yeah. So currently, we have organics collections at every public school in the Bronx, Manhattan, and Staten Island, and some routes, but not all in Brooklyn and Queens. And over, as we've announced previously, over the course of the next school year, 2023 to 2024, we will be expanding that organic service to every school in Brooklyn and Queens as well. So we'll have every public school receiving organic service by spring '24.
Got it. And I recently had a conversation with students, actually from a middle school in Manhattan, who reported that school, food that was not being eaten by students was tossed in a container and bleach was being poured over the food and that that was the policy they were told to destroy food. Is, have you heard of such a thing? And they wanted to know, why wouldn't the food be composted?
We absolutely want the food to be composted. If you know what specific school that is, we can follow up offline and make sure we're educating them on how to do that properly.
I'll absolutely follow up with you. And in terms of what preparation does DSNY provide to schools around to be prepared to come online? And I'd love to know which districts in Brooklyn you're working with.
Yeah. So we do a few different things. Our sort of first step with every school as we bring them online with the composting program is to give them all of the equipment, the signage, the stickers, the educational materials that they need. So we sort of do that deployment first. Then we work with the operational staff in the schools, the custodial engineers, the food service staff, to make sure they understand, you know, how the program works, what goes in what bin, how to set up the bins properly so that kids can use them. And then the last step is actually sending, and we generally work with Grow NYC and their recycling champions program, to send engagement staff into each of the schools, working with the principals and the sustainability coordinators and the teachers to do classroom activations, to do lunchroom activations, to, you know, hold sort of staff meetings with teachers, to answer their questions about how the program works, and try to encourage them to incorporate that composting and recycling messaging into their curriculum, especially where it makes sense from a STEM perspective and things like that. And we do provide those curriculum tools to teachers so that they can incorporate that into what kids are learning in the classroom.
And lastly, do you have a sense of how much organics have been recovered from the schools that are online through this program?
I didn't bring that number with me today, but that's one that we can definitely provide you.
That'd be great to know. Thank you. And also a breakdown by borough?
Yeah, we can give you the exact locations of the schools in Brooklyn that have composting today.
Thank you. And, and maybe this is not the, you were prepared for this, but in terms of, what's the cost of the school program at this point?
So the school program doesn't have a tremendous cost because the way we approached it was taking existing service, which was for trash five days a week, and converting that to organics five days a week. Because what we learned in our various waste characterization studies of schools is most of what schools throw out is either food or recyclable. So if we can give them daily service for organics and every other day service for paper and metal glass and plastic, we should be able to capture all of their waste, and there's very little trash remaining. In practice, you know, it's not so perfect, but, you know, we try to work with schools to get as much of the waste from cafeterias going into that organic spin. And DOE has been a great partner. They, you know, several years ago converted all their foam trays to compostable trays well before the foam ban took effect. They're, you know, continuing to explore other ways to get single-use plastics out of the cafeteria so it doesn't contaminate the food waste stream. So, you know, that's, that's sort of the approach that we're, we're taking with them. And because we converted existing trash trucks to, to organics trucks, there's very little net cost there.
And lastly, in terms of the smart bins, what's the cost of that program?
So each bin, as I mentioned before, costs around $4,000. And then the annual operational expenses associated with each bin, I think, is between 1,200 and 1,400.
Do you have a total?
A total for the entire program, not off the top of my head, because it is, it is changing as we...
Let's do some math here.
Per bin. I was like, how many bins do we have?
It is changing as we expand the program. So next year, for example, the, the sort of maintenance expenses for the 400 bins that we'll have deployed should be around $550,000 to $600,000. And then the bins themselves, 1.6 million total, like, cost for procurement installation.
That's impressive. Do you just do that?
Yeah, I don't know if it's right, so...
We're gonna, we're gonna...
The oath doesn't count for that one.
We'll, we'll, we'll do a follow-up. We do have Assemblymember Harvey Epstein on, who I'm going to call up. He wanted to talk about the NHTSA sanitation because he has a bill related to it. But I do have one question because, final question on this. We went to visit a zero-waste school last year, and it seemed the zero-waste school was completely dependent on in-cafeteria staff, mostly part-time staff who were there, really ensuring these, you know, like 10-year-olds aren't just throwing things. I mean, it was very hands-on assisted sorting of the waste. And if those staff members weren't there, I would argue that this would probably not work with the age group that we visited. Were any of these zero-waste schools impacted by any excess staff, the staffing, excessing of staff that happened with DOE from last budget year?
I can't speak to DOE's budget and staffing.
No, but did you have an impact on the zero-waste schools' programming and the ability to carry it out at the cafeteria level?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to call up Assemblymember Epstein, if he wants to say some words.
Thank you, Councilmember. I hope you're all well. And sorry to interrupt your hearing, but I, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the work that, that you all have been doing on the issue of sanitation fees related to public housing. I've been working with Councilmember Avila around legislation that I introduced here in Albany and legislation she's introducing in the council, trying to stop the double taxing of our NHTSA residents. Public housing currently pays sanitation fees like every other New Yorker, but unfortunately, there's an additional cost related to public housing residents, about $30 million. A few years ago, this was also an issue related to fees going to the NYPD, it was about $90 million. And we, you know, the city and the state together, we were able to stop that double taxation around police fees, but now the sanitation fees continue. And we know that our public housing authority in New York City is struggling for resources, and to be able to return $30 million to them to ensure better services in New York City and, you know, fixing up public housing is critical. So I just really want to applaud you, Councilmember Nurse, and Councilmember Avila, for moving this forward before the council. And I wholly support this legislation being passed in the council. And whatever help I can provide from the Assembly side, I would be happy to do. Thank you for letting me interrupt your hearing.
No, thank you. We're happy to see you. And also, maybe we need to scheme on the compost infrastructure so not all of this stuff gets burned off, and some of it can actually be turned into compost, like it says on the bins. So thank you for, for joining us.
Yeah, and again, thank you for your leadership on composting. We've been trying, you know, but, you know, the Community Action Council and kind of what we're seeing in Albany, unfortunately, is not moving in the perfect direction around composting, but I'm deeply committed, as you are, to ensuring that we have community composters and doing our best that we ensure that composting is turned into compost.
Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to a state budget. The last chunk, I saved the, for last so that some of the other members could go about their day, but we're going to talk about the rechargeable battery disposal. I know we're coming up on the two-hour mark. Okay, so we're going to talk about intro number 846. Again, this bill would require sanitation to come up with a plan for how to ensure proper disposable of rechargeable batteries used for power, powered mobility devices. I just wanted to start by asking, has DSNY seen an increase in issues related to the improper disposal of these batteries? If you can maybe share a little bit what you're seeing or what the conversations are like on DSNY's end around these?
Yeah, I think nationwide, we've seen an increase in fires in waste collection and waste management related to rechargeable batteries, particularly over the last three or four years. That's something that we experience. We've had fires in our trucks and in an increasing number. We're not always able to pinpoint exactly what the cause of those fires are, but we have had, I know from our own reports and from what the FDNY has told us, we've had several fires in the last year that have been identified as related to lithium-ion batteries. And, you know, we do certainly appreciate the, the very real safety challenges that the growing use of lithium-ion, or not just lithium-ion, but all rechargeable batteries creates. The mayor has convened a 16-agency task force, led by staff in the mayor's office, to address this issue comprehensively. I think the administration, you know, is proud to have worked with the council on, on the bill package that passed earlier this year to address some of those really critical safety challenges. And, you know, I think we're, we're proud to be a part of that task force addressing this issue.
Do you know how many battery-related fires you all have experienced in the last couple of years? I know you said a handful, but do you know how many?
I don't know the exact number. Again, we're not able to pinpoint the cause of the fires in, in many cases. I will say, anecdotally, what we've heard from our recycling vendors is that in some case, in some cases, they're having fires as often as once a week. Again, not always able to pinpoint the exact cause of the fire. And they're thankfully generally able to put them out very quickly and have not had, you know, damage to property or any serious injury or loss of life as a result. But, you know, we have seen a growing number of fires at recycling facilities in the New York metro area and around the country. So this is certainly a, a growing challenge that we as an industry are facing.
Yeah. How, how do you currently collect rechargeable batteries from e-bikes?
So we collect rechargeable batteries a few different ways. The primary is through our safe, safe disposal events, five in each borough twice a year, and our special waste sites, or sorry, the safe events, one in each borough twice a year, special waste sites, one in each borough, open every Saturday and the last Friday of the month. We accept all kinds of rechargeable batteries at those. So everything from powered tools to e-bikes. We also accept e-waste, paint, other types of special waste. And then at the safe events, we accept all kinds of hazardous waste as well, things like chemicals and other products. We do, through our curbside collection program on Staten Island, we do accept batteries alongside e-waste and textiles. The usage of that program has been incredibly low for batteries. We get a lot of e-waste. I think, I have the number written down here somewhere, 208,000 pounds of e-waste this year, only 1,700 pounds of batteries so far this year. So much higher demand on the e-waste side than on the battery side through that program.
Wait, say that again. 208 pounds of e-waste?
Thousand.
Thousand, okay. I was like, wait, no. Okay. And for rechargeable batteries, what was that?
1,700.
1,700. And that's just for the Staten Island program?
Correct.
What about citywide, like annually? What did you collect last year in rechargeable batteries?
So the rechargeable battery number, because it's managed along with all of our other household special waste and hazardous waste, we don't have a specific breakout for that specifically. We did last year, or in fiscal '22, collect 501 tons total of special waste and hazardous waste, compared to 1,603 tons of e-waste. So again, seeing a lot more e-waste through those programs. In part, I think attributable, attributable to the state e-waste disposal ban and EPR program, which funds much of our e-waste collection operations, funds our e-cycle program, funds the recycling and, and proper disposal of e-waste products that are collected through our special waste sites and safe events. We're not seeing the same state sort of approach on e-mobility batteries, and would love to see that happen.
Yeah. And just to, for the specific breakout, is that something you would be considering including in the updated swamp?
We certainly...
Like creating a breakout for the batteries itself?
Yeah, we could, we could talk to our special waste disposal vendor, Veolia, on what they could sort of break out for us in terms of data on batteries specifically.
Okay, and then what's the budgetary cost on, I know e-waste is separate from special waste, hazardous waste. What is, for the budget item that's associated with where the batteries would be, which is the special hazardous, right? What's the budget item for that annually?
So the current, there's a few different costs associated with it. There's the piece which is related to the management of the material. I don't have the number for that annually, but can provide it. It's several million dollars across the safe events and the special waste sites. And then there's also a cost in terms of staffing the special waste sites to keep them open. So, you know, increasing the number of days per week that those are open, for example, which is something we've talked about before. It's simply an, an operational cost, having someone there. Because these are sites that are permitted by the state DEC, you have to follow certain requirements, you have to have them staffed anytime they're open, you have to keep a logbook of, of all the material that's coming in and where it's coming in from. So meeting those requirements means that you have to, you have to spend money on that.
Can you tell us more about the recent issues at Gravesend Storage Facility? And what are the overall challenges DSNY faces in the disposal of e-bike batteries?
Yeah, so the, the issues at the, at the facility in Gravesend, at the Southwest Brooklyn complex, were really related to batteries that had been involved in fires. And so as part of the, the mayor's task force that, that he created, you know, we've really addressed those specific issues. And that was related to the batteries that had been involved in fires. And once a battery is damaged or defective, it becomes hazardous waste, and the storage and transportation requirements become much more complex. Sanitation is great at managing regular waste. We can even do special waste. Hazardous waste is a totally different animal. So the challenge there was there were a lot of batteries that had been involved in fires. They were in these sort of specialized storage drums, and they were just accumulating, and they were sort of beyond our ability to dispose of. So we worked with DEP to take over the disposal of that hazardous waste, and they have hazardous waste experts on staff. They manage a lot of the hazardous waste response in the city government, so they're the right folks to, to sort of take that on.
Okay. Give me a second. I know that you all mentioned you don't support this, but I think, you know, we don't have the EPR yet that we want, the dream EPR that we want. And the reality is that whether you're a worker or someone just buying this for personal enjoyment, there, there's the proliferation of these batteries is an issue. And people are just storing them in the basements, they're, you know, rigging them different ways, they're throwing them out. If, if DSNY was able to develop a plan for collections of this material and hand them off to the right storage, this seems like a program that would fully qualify for an EPR and ultimately have some revenue generating aspect for it, even though there might be an upfront cost at first associated with DSNY, like rolling out a plan. Is this something, I mean, I think we don't really have much other choice right now. We don't have the ability to have corporation, we're not necessarily holding corporations' feeds to the fire, and we're kind of behind the curve on this. So it seems like we need some agency to do this. Your collections and operations of collections is your wheelhouse. Wouldn't it be, would you be open to starting up as hopefully the advocacy works at the state level to put that EPR forward so that eventually this could be something that wouldn't be cost negative for us?
I think it's something we're, we're open to discussing, but, you know, we can't ignore the fact that there are costs for creating new programs. And, and certainly appreciate that Staten Island is probably not representative of the rest of New York in terms of the usage of e-mobility devices. But we have not, to date, seen tremendous demand for, you know, that sort of curbside collection approach. And, you know, we've discussed before at length about the challenge...
I'm not talking about a curbside collection approach. I'm just talking about, like, either locations, like drop facilities, like some other thing. I don't think curbside is the right way to do it. I'm talking about more access to a safe disposal site beyond just a couple of events a year, beyond trekking to like two facilities, because the proliferation of them is so big that there just needs to be more locations available in places where you're seeing a lot of workers, you're seeing a lot of delivery services. I mean, it's just, it's unimaginable to think that we're just going to rely on corporations to like step up and take this back. Like, I don't think that's the reality for a while, and the, and the fires we're dealing with are more frequent. So I'm talking specifically about like ability to drop off batteries somewhere for just somebody who's just like, "I'm a worker," or "I got this e-bike. I don't know anything about this stuff. I don't care about this stuff. I just need to get this out of my house so it doesn't burn my house down."
Yeah, I, I think we, you know, we're open to creating such a program, but there is a cost associated with it. We have to consider that cost in the context of the overall city budget.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not something that we can commit to, you know, in a vacuum outside of other budget conversations.
I guess it was just more of like in a, a comment, maybe, rather than a question. Do you have any questions about this? I have a few more. One of them was what resources would the agency require? And it sounds like you need staffing, you need management, and potentially facilities.
Yeah, and I think the, the facilities are honestly the biggest piece of this. I think, you know, staffing, staffing is something that we can provide relatively easily and quickly and put a number on in a pretty straightforward manner. But in terms of identifying where these drop-off sites are going to be located and ensuring that they have the right DEC compliance, whether it's a permit or a registration or whatever, you know, that's something that we have to, we have to plan for, and it takes time to be able to put that in place.
Do, are sanitation garages something that DEC or DEP like inspects or has any part in the process of ensuring is a safe facility by chance?
Yes, but generally... Yes, but generally only related to things like the discharge of water that's used to wash equipment, or the storage of things like used motor oil or other sort of chemicals that are used to maintain the equipment. It's not, they're not regulated as waste management facilities.
Okay. And so exploring that route of potentially having every garage potentially be a place for a certain amount of storage, like obviously that has a budget cost, it's like, it's a whole thing. But given that that's where your people are already associated with trash, is that something that, if facilities is the biggest kind of a challenge, maybe the garages could be something to be explored?
I think we're open to further discussions on that. But, you know, there are severe space limitations at some of our facilities, and, you know, it may not be feasible everywhere.
I think the rest of these questions are kind of implicitly answered. I don't have any further questions for you at this time. Councilmember Ressler, do you have anything else to add? Okay. Sorry, I'm getting a text from Annel. There's probably one more question she would like me to ask. Sorry, how does DSNY collaborate with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation? In relationship to the e-bike batteries?
You know, I think we have been, to be frank, frustrated by their level of effort on rechargeable batteries in general. The history here is New York City in 2007 passed a rechargeable battery law that was, you know, much more ambitious. In 2010, the state legislature preempted the city law, which happens most of the time that the city passes a good EPR program. And the level of enforcement of the existing rechargeable battery law at the state level, which does not cover e-mobility batteries, I think has been pretty low, and I think we're seeing pretty low compliance, and we don't have authority, we're actually expressly prohibited from enforcing the existing state law. So I think that's one of the things we would like to change. We understand DEC has, they have a huge mandate that covers many different areas, and they can't, you know, they don't have the staff to be able to do everything. We have experience doing enforcement here in New York City and holding businesses accountable that are supposed to be doing the right thing. We should have enforcement authority to be able to make sure that folks that are selling batteries, currently not e-mobility batteries, but hopefully in the future when the state law covers e-mobility batteries, you know, the folks who are selling products are taking their products back and safely recycling them.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Thanks for answering all those questions today. We're gonna turn it over to testimony. We're gonna bring up our honorary committee member, Eric Goldstein. Might as well be a part of the committee. I don't know if we have any of the Workers' Justice Project folks? We can add them after him.
All right, we need to go when you're ready. Good afternoon, Chair Nurse and staff. My name is Eric Goldstein, the Natural Resources Defense Council, NRDC, has been following waste issues in New York City since then Mayor Koch proposed to build five to eight huge garbage-burning incinerators in the 1980s. We thought there was a better way, and since that time, our focus has been on converting city policy from primary emphasis on incineration and landfilling to making recycling, waste prevention, composting, and equity the four cornerstones of waste policy in New York City. We believe the top priority for the council continues to be on the waste front, the zero-waste package, and specifically Intro 244, which you and Councilmember Hanif and Powers are leading the charge on. It's great to see so many council members interested in so many issues on waste policy. That's not something that has always happened, and the enthusiasm and recognition of the importance of these waste issues is really, when you look at it with an historic lens, is very encouraging. Quickly, a rundown of today's agenda. Intro 544, Councilmember Osay would boost the penalties for failure to store waste properly. The current penalties are often just seen as a cost of doing business. We strongly support that legislation. Intro 649, Councilmember Vilas would prohibit DSNY from charging NYCHA for sanitation services. We see no reason why NYCHA residents should be treated differently from every other resident in the city. NYCHA should be receiving free DSNY service. We strongly support that legislation. Intro 846, Councilmember Nurse would require DSNY to develop a plan for promoting proper disposal of rechargeable batteries used for motorized devices. While the details may need further consideration, we believe that the safe disposal of these batteries should and must receive increased attention from the city. We encourage you to move forward, and we definitely support legislation on this front. Intro 768, Councilmember Moya would direct DSNY to implement the system for letter-grade ratings of street cleanliness. We like this goal and believe the concept needs some refinement, certainly addressing all of the commercial corridors, and, but maybe meshing this idea with an expansion and improvement of the existing analysis provided in the mayor's management reports, which I think rightly were critiqued today for not being accurate reflections of the reality all of us see on the streets of the city. Intro 832 by our friend, Councilmember Breaux would require DSNY to collect organics from community gardens. We love the community gardens, but our understanding, which DSNY confirmed today, is that the department will be collecting from community gardens as the curbside program is phased in. Intro 720, which would require DSNY to collect solid waste from nursing homes, even those privately operated at no cost. We don't believe it makes sense that nursing homes be treated differently from every other commercial for-profit business in the city, so we don't support that legislation. And finally, Intro 863, Councilmember Ressler, another great environmental friend on so many issues. That would require DSNY to install at least 25 public organics receptacles in every community district. We share the council member sentiment, but at least in the present form, are not sure that this legislation should move forward. As noted at the outset, we believe the priority for organics should be passage of the zero-waste package with the curbside bill 244, and after that, have the city analyze exactly where the need for these additional smart bins should go. We thank you for your attention. This was a great hearing, and your continuing work is appreciated by everyone. Even though there weren't a lot of people here today, we know that New Yorkers care about these issues. We appreciate your leadership.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. I think we just have a couple people online. So we're gonna call up Antonio Solis and Legia Walpa to testify.
Your time will begin.
Sí.
Okay. Hola, buenos dias. Este, mi nombre es Antonio Solis. Soy líder de los Deliveristas Unidos y miembro del proyecto de justicia laboral. Gracias a la presidenta de este comité, Sandy Nurse, por la oportunidad para hablar y siempre apoyar a los deliveristas. Nos orgullece tener una concejal que fue deliverista y entiende nuestras verdaderas necesidades. Hoy estoy aquí testificando a favor de la propuesta de la ley Intro 0846, que propone crear más lugares de reciclaje de las baterías de litio y educar a la comunidad de cómo y dónde dejar las baterías que ya no funcionan o ya no sirven. Pero también estoy preocupado por los hartos costos que vamos a tener que solventar en este proceso de la transición a baterías certificadas. Somos más de 65,000 deliveristas, en la cual el más del 90% usamos baterías no certificadas, y ahora nos va a tocar invertir entre 500 a 1,000 dólares para comprar baterías certificadas. Y sin un pago mínimo es un golpe económico, es más duro para el deliverista que depende solo de las propinas para proveer a nuestras familias. Los deliveristas y nuestras bicicletas y baterías son esenciales para transportar comida, medicina, y literalmente todo lo necesario. Especialmente en tiempos de pandemia y tormentas, no hay marcha atrás. Las bicicletas y motos eléctricas son el presente y el futuro del transporte más fiable y eficaz para la ciudad de Nueva York. Los deliveristas estamos llevando a la ciudad de Nueva York hacia un futuro más sostenible y menos contaminación. Estamos preocupados por los incendios, y estamos dispuestos a trabajar con todos ustedes para hacer que más de 65,000 deliveristas transicione a baterías certificadas. Pero esto requiere que trabajemos juntos para crear un plan que refleje nuestras necesidades. Es importante crear un programa de intercambio de baterías en donde el deliverista pueda intercambiar nuestras baterías expiradas y no certificadas por nuevas baterías certificadas a bajo costo o sin ningún costo. Esto va a permitir la transición y baterías más seguras sean más rápidas y seguras. Sin un pago mínimo, transicionar a baterías más seguras es más difícil para los deliveristas. Esperemos trabajar juntos y ser parte de todas estas nuevas políticas públicas, puesto que somos expertos en el uso de bicicletas y motos eléctricas. Gracias a la concejal Sandy Nurse y todos los concejales de este comité por escuchar, y espero trabajar con ustedes para desechar miles de baterías de más de 65,000 trabajadores, apoyarlos en la transición de la compra de nuevas baterías certificadas, también contar con su apoyo para que la ciudad de Nueva York ya cumpla con la ley y ya termine por determinar nuestro pago mínimo sin más retrasos. En este tiempo de transición, en todo tenemos que desechar y comprar nuevas baterías certificadas. Es posible hacerlo, dependiendo de las propinas de los clientes. Los Deliveristas Unidos estamos aquí para trabajar juntos por un mejor futuro, y bueno, le doy las gracias por escucharme y todo su tiempo, y esperemos que todas estas leyes nos sirvan a todos los deliveristas, y bueno, para cuidar toda la seguridad de nosotros, de nuestras familias, y cuidar de todos los neoyorkinos. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, Antonio, para tu tiempo y tu testimonio. Next, we're gonna hear from Legia.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, your time will begin.
Okay. So, good afternoon. Thank you, Chairwoman Sandy Nurse, and the council members of this committee for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Legia Walpa. I'm the executive director of the Workers' Justice Project, an organization that organizes low-wage workers to transform the industries to be a driver and a source of safe and dignified jobs. I'm here to testify in support of Intro 0846, that will require the Department of Sanitation to develop a plan for ensuring proper disposal of rechargeable batteries used for power mobility devices. This legislation is part of a comprehensive plan to ensure our cities, our city can transition to a new era of safe micromobility, and the right, and it is the right approach to address the spikes in fires caused by lithium batteries. Los Deliveristas and Workers' Justice Project supports the city council effort to get on safe batteries off our streets and transition New Yorkers to the use of certified batteries. At this very moment, we have, as Antonio had said, we have 65,000 deliveristas who will have to transition to certified batteries, which means we will have thousands of deliveristas who would need to know how, where, and when to dispose these uncertified batteries. We are committed to working with New York City Council and the Department of Sanitation to educate the deliverista community about the disposal of thousands of uncertified batteries while building a safe micromobility infrastructure, including public charging stations across our city, and working together to ensure that New York City delivers a minimum pay for deliveristas without any further delay. The reality is that the growing dependency on e-bikes is fueled by the demand of food delivery apps that have recklessly widened delivery radios without notice, forcing delivery workers to travel longer distances to fulfill the orders as soon as possible. The problem is not that, is not deliveristas, nor the e-bikes that they use to do this work. There is a clear need to shift the public narrative by creating policies that transforms this industry into a profession that not only deserves respect, but also deserves infrastructure that meets their needs. Deliveristas need more accessible collection areas, need more charging stations, need a program that allows them to transition to the use of uncertified to certified batteries at low cost, and most importantly, they desperately need a minimum pay, so they don't no longer have to rely on tips, as Antonio had said. The same way Deliveris that had our back during the pandemic, New York City Council and the administration has the responsibility to protect them and build the infrastructure that meets the needs of 65,000 deliveristas. We're ready to work with the Department of Sanitation to deliver education, to make sure every deliverista knows how and where to dispose these batteries. And deliveristas have already demonstrated how vital they are to our city's economy and how vital they are to the disaster response and recovery of our city. In order to protect deliveristas, we must implement policy and a plan that takes into account their voices, their needs, and the reality of deliveristas in our community. We look forward to working with you all, the council members, and the Department of Sanitation on moving us to a new future of safe micromobility.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your testimony and your time today. Looking forward to working with you on this and being in conversation with the wider coalition around the bike economy, e-bike economy that is growing here in New York City, and the infrastructure we need around it. So thank you so much today for joining. I believe that's it, right? Okay, so we are done hearing testimony. Thank you, everyone, for joining today. We're gonna close out.